is lead, can't get back in here. Save the rest for 50 minutes.
You say, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
I get that.
So. But like I said, he's got, he's got a couple of bloods he shared. But then I actually patrol me out of the house.
No, no.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you need leave, get something.
He's holding there if you want.
I'll tell you where I'm at. And we'll come back to all of you guys. But his girlfriend. She's a horse trainer in Silver. Where the president's sitting there and it's on, he called him a fire yesterday, but it was on the other side of the freeway. But it was late last night. It was heading backwards. Because the wind, the San Andreas quit. So the offshore winds quit and now it's going back offshore. So now it's burning fire back there.
Cool.
So she was at the question center waiting to evacuate. Heard she got 14 horses trained. Their name was Jumper. Take those out of the train, but if the path you're sent to.
Nope, I'm good. Are you, Katie, are you ready?
I am ready, yeah, you're live.
Okay, we're recording. I think. All right. Welcome to City Council meeting on January 9th, 2025. I, uh. Think this might be the last one here. In this building. Cool. All right. We'll, uh. Start with the play, just later. Do this.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons. Honesty under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, item number two.
Okay, you guys don't want to see that, let me switch it over.
That's true.
Let's see. You don't want to see that either.
Okay, so item number two is the consent agenda for the minutes from January.
December.
December.
Sorry, December 12th. And the check register from January. Uh, he. The minutes have been emailed, should have all seen those. And the check register is in your packet.
And on the check register, um, we've got a payment for the building of $51,275.8. But we just got today, do that's what we're going to have to restrict you.
That means we added?
Yes.
51,000, sorry? Okay, well, I'll ask one question because I had already written down on the 179 payment is what's this is? This is draw eight from the 51,000 from nine?
Yep.
How many more?
Probably one.
And I have one other question. And it may be me, I may have dreamt this wrong. But the two lift station pumps. Especially the one here on foothill. I thought that the developer was responsible for that upgrade.
He is.
But not purchase of the pumps?
We're purchasing the pumps and he's reimbursing us.
Okay, for both howl and?
No, just for the foothill. Howl one, foothill one is the cost of the developer. But we're, we're paying the cost to the reorder the pumps. To meet the state tax.
Sure.
And all kinds of stuff.
Okay. That was just, I saw that up there and I thought, wait a minute, we were supposed to.
Yeah, we'll get reimbursed for that.
Okay. Well, that's all I have.
All right, any other questions?
No, that was my question on the pump two.
Okay. I'll take the motion for the minutes and for the check register with the addition of the. 51,000.
Two seventy five.
Two seventy five.
Oh, wait.
Oh, wait.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion to pass the check register for December 2024. With the addition of the 51,275.08 to Webster Construction and also the minutes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll take that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Please initial that, pass it down. Okay. There are, uh, let's see, item number three, public comment. For anyone who has anything to say that's regarding anything that's not on the agenda, we'll go ahead and open the public comment now. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, for inviting me up here.
Sure.
The House members, staff. Uh, I wanted to come and kind of give you a final report of just what happened on the Race Across America program. I tell you, we used, we're not able to make it, it was stunning. It was absolutely stunning, it was success far beyond my beliefs. Uh, just a little reminder, we have over 500 veterans in the seven cemeteries in the district here. I had no idea we would ever get all 500 of those recovered, but we did. We raised enough money to recover every single veteran with a wreath. And that was very significant, but it's only one part of the program. The program was actually a three-part program. We're there to remember the people that are in the, in the cemetery, the veterans. Also to honor the people that are veterans and still living. And we had them come up, we invited them up. There was just about every cemetery where there were free 10 and 15 living veterans there that were participating in this. And then to me, the cheat of the thing was teaching younger people the value of patriotism. Veterans, you know, the country, so many, so many bits over here from the T C. So I wanted to thank you much, I, I think the most fabulous, uh, program we had was right here at the Francis Cemetery. It was, it was stunning, wasn't it?
It's cool.
I mean, and your journey was there with the mountain posse, when, uh, there was well over 100 people there. It was, it was just stunning. Did you get an idea of what you're participating in? The national numbers are in now. This year, they covered 3 million veterans' graves throughout the entirety of the United States. 4,700 cemeteries. It's, it's phenomenal, I'm scrolling every year, so I'm here to thank you. Thank you so much and remind you that I will be back next year.
Good deal.
Good deal, perfect.
Um, last thing, I got the last leg of my thing to do, which is now to figure out what am I going to do with 500 wreaths?
I gotta get rid of them.
Do you have any, any room in your dumpster where we can put maybe 40 to 50 wreaths in if we need to?
Are they, are they real?
Yeah, they're very brittle now and they're falling all apart.
Wait, I know there's a guy that wants to.
Throw them in, I'll try it. The construction, the dumpster out here?
Yeah.
The construction waste?
We could put them in there.
Apparently so, yep.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So I know there's a guy on 248 that will feed him to his goats too, if you want to haul them down there. I don't know if they're too brittle for that.
Well, we've got a lot of places, going to some areas, cemetery's got a three-yard dumpster and we've got a lot of people that volunteer. But 500 wreaths is a lot of wreaths.
Yeah, that is.
The question, are they still on the ground?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna start cleaning them up this week.
Oh, okay. So you have people to do that? Do you need volunteers?
Um, I don't think so, we'll, we'll see what we got if I have to find somebody I don't. But I think we're gonna be okay, I think we're gonna be okay. So thank you very much, thank you so much again.
Can I say?
Bye now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. There's no public hearings, we'll move to, are the audits being moved, right?
Fine, yeah.
So, uh, item A under. Agenda 5 is scratched. We'll do that next month. Move to item B, which is open to public meetings training with city attorney.
Just getting down to business.
I'm getting serious.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that, go to next one. This is the annual open public meetings training. Um, you're required to, uh, have it. So the main purpose of open public meetings is to make sure that you're ready for the public's business anyway. Public has an opportunity to participate. Let's go to the next one.
Sure.
Uh, all meetings are open unless you close them. Uh, that includes work meetings and executive sessions. Get that, it's, if you enter, you have to have a vote, two-thirds of the council has a vote and super majority, so that's. That means you have to have four out of five to be voted in order to close it. Um, let's go to the next meeting, or the next slide.
Come on.
Uh, in Francis, in order to have a meeting, you have to have three of the five elected officials present. In order for a successful vote. So if you only have three members of the council here and you have a vote that's two to one, that does not pass. In order to get a passing vote from the Francis City Council, it has to be a majority of the elected officials, not a majority of who's present. So, and that goes for the planning commission as well. So if you have a planning commission, um, that commission only has five members, if you only have three there. In order for anything to move from the commission onto the council or for, in your case. In order to move with a positive recommendation or a negative recommendation. You have to have at least three votes. They're the same, so if you only have three members present, you have to have a unanimous vote, whatever it is. So that could be to deny it, or it could be to approve it, or it could be to forward the recommendation. Whether it's negative or positive, so.
You can't have a two to one?
Two to one vote is, is the same as if not, as if not passing or not, if it's unsuccessful. No matter what the motion was, the motion was unsuccessful. So you'd be in a stalemate, so you'd have, I mean, if, if you couldn't get beyond that. Then the next motion I would anticipate would be a motion to continue to a meeting, to a next meeting, so it could be addressed. With, uh, hopefully a full man commission next time.
Question, if I understand that bottom line, we have to have three council members and the mayor does not count as one of them?
Oh, no, he does. So you have, you have a five-member council, sorry, did I miss? Okay, so that's from the six-member council.
Okay.
From the five-member council, I've got, I've got both, got that former government, okay? This former government, mayor does have a vote in every, on everything. And the six-member council, the mayor does not have a vote on anything unless it's tied. Got it? Or there's got to be an exception to it.
Got the Capitol errors.
Exactly.
I don't know if I, no, if I Capitol errors, it's tied with it.
He's done, he's turned him on.
Next one, Eric, hit the button, so.
Yeah.
Uh, so in order to have a public meeting, you have to have public notice, it needs to be. You need to have a reasonable spec, I did this word, this is kind of my word. Reasonable specificity of topics need to be on the agenda. So you can't just say, uh, development plan on the agenda, this is what you're going to be looking at. It has to say development, you know, concept approval or concept plan for address of the group. So somebody that's just, you know, John Q resident or Sally resident or whoever wants to look at the agenda, find out what's going on. They have a reasonable chance of understanding what's on the agenda if they're just looking at the agenda whole and not at the whole package. So you can't just have generic information, you know, it's got to be reasonably specific. There are, you're supposed to at minimum have 24 hours notice of a public meeting. You all know this, Suzanne does an excellent job making sure that that's supposed to be well before the 24 hour. And if we have to amend it, we have to amend it with 24 hours left before. And you, the council can amend the agenda during the meeting. But, um, the city reporter can't amend it after the 24 hours. He's passing, nonetheless, there's an emergency.
How are they notified?
Who?
The notice. How is the 24 hours notified? Like, how are they notified in public? How can I post them on the meeting?
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's, so it's posted, it's posted electronic on the website, it's posted at the link. Um, and it used to be have to be posted in the paper, but papers have died.
But I still do it.
Some people still do it, but the law doesn't require that anymore because not everybody has access to it.
So on the website and then a physical sign on the thing?
And on the Utah Public Milors website. So, yeah. Yeah, there's, if you look up Utah Public Milors website, um. You look up Utah Public Milors website, you'll find agendas for every city, or you're supposed to find, get their compliance with the law. You'll find them in every city, move your planning commission. Um, you're also required, the city's also required annually to approve a meeting schedule and then post that. And I believe we did that in December.
Yes.
So, next slide.
Hold on, putting the board, this says topic raised by the public is at the discretion of the mayor and the chair.
Yep. So.
So if someone raises a topic that's not currently on the agenda?
It's not on the agenda, yeah, so, so you have to be careful on that. So if, let's say, let's say during public comment period, somebody comes up and raises something that's of concern. And the mayor of the council wants to address it. Uh, technically it's under the mayor's discretion, whether they address it or not. But you can't take any action on it.
Okay.
Um, when I mean action, so let's say, let's say it's, hey, I've got this piece of property and I'd like to sell to you for a dollar. Because you didn't notice it on the agenda, you can't buy it for a dollar.
Right, we can talk about it.
You can talk about it, but you can't take any action, you have to post it to the next one. You can, within 24 hours, you can get noticed 24 hours and have a meeting tomorrow. Be late, but you have a meeting tomorrow and then you can talk about it. But you could deal with it.
That's what I was thinking, I just, when I saw that, I was like.
Yeah. Okay, so typically, typically, it depends on, it depends on the city, but typically. You're not going to have a back and forth during the public comment period. Uh, it's more common not to have any back and forth with the member of the public that's bringing up an issue during public comment. The mayor and the council may say, hey, staff, can you, can you meet with this individual and help address this? Give them the information they're seeing after the meeting or tomorrow, whatever it may be. Next. Hit the game. Okay, um, the mayor, uh, has, or whoever's chairing the meeting, but in Francis's case, it's the mayor. Uh, has the authority to dismiss someone from the meeting if they're being disruptive or sort of. Uh, and it's, it's at the mayor's discretion. So, you know, if somebody is up here cussing and swearing, and they're gonna string you up afterwards. Uh, you have the authority to kick them out. And if they refuse, they are, uh, they may be guilty, uh, they may be missed, I go to the next, get by the mayor.
What about the commission?
The chair of the planning commission also has the ability, yes, to be able to, uh, tell someone to leave. Uh, often in, um. Larger cities, uh, you may have a sheriff and or a supervisor and that would assist in those situations. So, since the mayor's vote.
It's like one word kind of like.
He can assist with that. Uh, electronic meeting, uh, electronic meetings are allowed, there actually have been quite a few changes last legislative session to make them more. Encouraged, uh, to, to encourage more participation from elected officials that may be out of town. Uh, so you still need an anchor location, but you can, um, you can have a meeting completely electronic if you want. Um, when you do that, the only difference is what the law changed, is that now you have to have an ability. If you don't have an anchor location, or if you're not all present, or the majority aren't all present in an anchor location. You have to have a way for the public to participate as if there were any person. So whether that's a chat feature, or that they can raise hand and participate in public comment or in a public hearing. Or, um, being able to participate via video, um, like on Zoom or WebEx sort of feature. So that's been, uh, they may, it's a little easier. But the key that what the language of the statute says is that you need to be able to have meaningful participation. That's the language of the use, so. Go ahead and hit that. Okay, written minutes, uh, this goes for the planning commission and city council. The, the recording has to be maintained. Uh, an audio recording, unedited, has to be maintained, but the, the official record of the meeting is the written minutes. And the minutes all go to you, um, once they're, once they're in draft form, uh, they need to be available for public if they ask for them. Uh, and once they are completed and approved, uh, the city reporter has three days to get them posted. To the public on the website after three days.
How long are they, are the records maintained for?
Uh, in perpetuity. Yeah, you can't, you can't give it. So I, I am aware of several, um. Over the last couple of decades, you weren't required to have an audio recording. You still are required to maintain those, keep those available. Uh, but I am aware that there have been, um, situations where, uh. We're describing. That, um, sometimes their systems have been hijacked through attempts at forcing bribes to regain control of their stuff. Um, and cities have been able to make that payments where they've lost recordings because they didn't have, um, their backups and their groupie bank that were compromised. So I am aware that that has happened, but the written minutes are still, well, those are the official record, I think. So, and council and planning commissioners get chances to review those and make edits. As long as everybody's, or a majority's agreeing with the edits, they can give those changes. So, but once the minutes are approved, that's the official record. Next slide. Or next, hit the buttons, maybe I can have this one set here. Yeah, so there's what was required to be in the minutes. Through minutes through business days after approval, official record, pending minutes within a reasonable time. Which are prepared, a draft, that's the same as a draft, but not yet, but for. So, reasonable time has not yet been defined, other than a reasonable time. And I've seen some of that be 90 days when they've had ten minutes transfer over. Quick or get sick or things along those lines, so I've seen that happen. Okay. Let's see, recorded and permanently retained, um, those are required to be available in three business days of the meeting. And it's supposed to be, well, it's required to be complete and unadded if required. So, which are missing, Florida tapes would not be compliant in this situation. Okay, next.
There's not been change back in three years over the years.
Three years?
Yeah. I was reading something about.
Let's check. Permanently, permanently retained, this one's actually. We'll look. Um, closed meetings, again, two out of three, um. Vote if the entire council is present. So, um, if there's, if there's one who's present, that vote is, that vote is determined by the number of people here. So if there's only four hundred persons, three out of four is sufficient to go in a closed session. But the whole council's here, four out of five. And there's only certain reasons you can go in a closed session, um, I'll give you some examples of that. Uh, one of the reasons is to discuss the, if you didn't, Katie will probably show some of them.
Yeah.
Professional competency, um, uh, to discuss the individual's character, professional competency or physical or mental health. Uh, that's when no recording is made in a closed session. Other closed sessions, um, for the most part have recordings made, the one. There may be, there may be some other, there's some minor ones, but we don't usually deal with those in cities at long for. Strategy sessions that discuss how to deal with unions. If, if, like, for example, UTA is a union, so they don't record those meetings, so they don't get accidentally volatile meetings and that's kind of it. There's, anyway, so those are strategy sessions that, and, you know, collective bargaining kind of stuff doesn't get recorded either. But, um, but for the most part, other than, and the reason you don't record the professional competency, the idea is, is. Is or physical or mental health, those ones, is because. Number one, it's pretty sensitive and if anything got out, um, it's just to protect the individual that they're talking about, right? It's not to protect people, and it's also to allow, to make sure that, um, you're making a good decision. And everybody that's in that closed session, uh. Feels able to participate without fear of retribution because there's not a recording in that, someone's gonna come back, right? If anything happens to you, but the idea behind it is you're making a best decision for the city. That's usually what that is related to. Um, if you're talking a strategy session through litigation or to discuss, you know, uh, reasonably imminent litigation. Uh, as long as you're the statue, then those are closed and that's because attorney-client privilege, you know, it. Those, those communications are protected, they do have to be recorded and that they can be listened to. If there is a lawsuit or a challenge to what was happening or whether or not they were proper in that. And that has happened in the past, and then what happens is the judge gets that recording, listens to it, comes back and makes a decision. Listens to it in chambers, not like over court. So, uh, those are protected and not subject to grandma. The other thing that they want to do is have a strategy session to real property. If the city's acquiring or selling real property, uh, they set a floor or something like that, or a ceiling or whatever, other than to pay. You don't necessarily, or what they're willing to take in, in compensation for those, you don't want to share that with the buyer. So those are protected, right? So the city gets the best feeling, you're getting the best value, um, what they're expiring or selling for the residents of the town there. Uh, the other one is deploying security measures. I can tell you, in my career, I've been through a handful of those. Typically, they are for the location of, um. It's been for the location of weapons to combat, um, potential active shooter situations at schools. So, um, those are closed so that not the voters were. Uh, of those situations and where the locations of those things are, etc. Uh, investigative proceedings, I mean, there's a few other ones, but for the most part, that's the ones we usually deal with is real property, professional competency. Um, and initial, uh, litigation. Um, those are the ones that we do with, the kind of security measures. Have, I have done a few of the investigative proceedings when, uh, when employee, city employees. Charged with or alleged to have some criminal conduct, have done that before too. So, um, not talking about Francis, but other places. So, next one.
Okay, I, I just had a quick question. Are these closed meetings, the recordings, are they protected under the grandma?
Yes.
Somebody can't come into a vote, can't come in, out, or not?
No, the only way they can be disclosed is through lawsuit.
Through a lawsuit, and it's like, okay.
And they have to, they have to ask for, ask for them to be disclosed and then. They don't get to listen to them, the judge gets to listen to them and then makes a decision based on.
That's how I thought I heard you, but I wanted to just have a make sure.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, next one. Let's see, um, so this is one that, uh, has come up recently with a lot of, um. There's been, well, there's been quite a few, uh, quite a few, uh, city council members, not here, but that have, not here recently, but, um, that have resigned. And so, you know, this one, and the first question that's come up is, but we don't want to, we don't want to have an interview all these people in public. Uh, we would like to do that in a closed session, that's specifically prohibited. When you have a, an effective claims, you participated in that, it was a public interview in a council meeting, and anybody's welcome to come. And that's how that's supposed to be done, so we do that in a public meeting. Any member of the public can get whatever the candidate submitted, the application, candidate submitted, you resonate, everything I've got, all that's public information because they're applying to public office. So those are, um, prohibited from being done in a closed session. Good, let's see. Again, what's in the record? Um, the one thing I didn't point out, but it was on there, but, so when you do the closed session for, to discuss the professional competency or mental or physical health of the individual. Those, those, they do require that you file, you write an affidavit. An affidavit that says, you know, the mayor has to sign that, city reporter prepares it and attests to it, that, uh, that was the only thing that was discussed. We discussed, we discussed professional competency, mental or physical health of the individual. And, uh, and then you have to sign an affidavit that was accurate. So that's the record that's maintained for that part. Yeah, next one. And those are, those records, those records of those meetings and recordings are permanently retained as well. You don't do minutes on closed sessions though. Uh, emergency meeting, emergency is not defined, that's basically up to council discretion. On how they want to do that. Uh, you have to make an attempt to notify all members, uh, and the notice that's required, it's not 24 hours, it's as best as you can do. Sometimes you're not going to have, I mean, if you've got an emergency, you may not have, um, you may not have access to the internet, internet may be down. So Suzanne's not going to be able to post, you know, public milors website, there's emergency and all that communication to down. So, um, you have to do it the best you can. Uh, and you also have to have a majority of the elected officials approve or consent to have the. So you can't just, two members of council can't show up and have an, have an emergency. So, you can't just, two members of council can't show up and have an, have an emergency.
Well, they can, because it's not a meeting, unless there's three.
Well, it's not a meeting. They can't, they can't, they can't bind the city in any way. Okay, next. So, this is really interesting, so other issues that have been, or about resolve. So there used to be always this question, well, what about, I mean, the statute addressed it, but what about a social gathering? Let's say, let's say Shanna is, has got a mean smoked brisket, and she just calls up, because she is so tight with her council members. She calls them up and says, hey, I want you guys out to come over and try my brisket that I just finished smoking, just came up. You gotta try it, it's the best. So, everyone's like, okay, and then, and then, and then mayor's like, wait, we have to notice this as a meeting. You don't have to notice that as a meeting. There have been times that, that mayor may not have been required. There's been some arguments back and forth and whether it was. But, the problem, the key in those situations is, you don't have to notice it, but it's not a meeting, because you didn't put out a notice. You can't talk about any city business, and nothing that happens in that meeting is binding, or that social gathering is binding. And you shouldn't talk about anything that's people's business, because again, the whole point of the open public meetings act is, what was on the first slide, you remember?
Conduct the public's.
Conduct the public's business in the open. Yeah. All right. There is a criminal violation for violation of the open public meetings act. So, you can't be charged with that. So, right, next one. So, this one has come up, I haven't seen this issue here, but I've been sitting in meetings, uh, many times, and you see, and I've actually had, uh, members of the public witness all this, and then go back and watch the YouTube recording of the meeting, and then, uh, make claims that the city is violating, and then file a grandma request, that city officials are violating the open public meetings act. So I'm just gonna tell you that it's incredibly embarrassing for a public official, an elected official, a city council member, to get a grandma request and ask for their phone text communications that occurred during a public meeting. And then I get a list, and when I get, when I call in and tell them that they have to produce all the text messages, because those are records, whether they're on your phone, or the city pays for the phone or not. If it's a communication that happens during the public meeting, it is a public record. And I have seen it and witnessed it, not, I witnessed it after the fact. But, just, the, the, the best advice I can give you, don't text during a council meeting, or a legislative meeting.
So I have a question about that.
Yeah.
Is that just for the council members, or is that on everybody's city on the table?
So, it's just, so, I, I've been sitting as a city attorney and received text messages from my mayor asking a legal question. That's not, that's a protected communication anyway, because it's a term of client. So that wouldn't be grandma requestable, you could ask for it, but it would be protected and would be provided.
I'm just gonna use a hypothetical, I'm not saying this happened.
Right.
What if Scott gets an email from a developer about something that we're discussing?
It's certainly communication that could be, could be grandma-ized anyway, could be requested anyway, so there's nothing protected about that. But if it's something you're discussing, if it's, if it's in a public comment setting, then sure, he can bring it up and say, hey, we just got a public comment from this, and it's during a public hearing. But if it's
During a close.
During the, during a meeting after a public hearing, I don't know whether I'd bring it up, I mean, unless it's.
Well, let's say Scott and Katie are texting back and forth in the meeting.
So those, those are grandma requestable communications during a meeting.
Or is it a violation of the?
Of the open public meetings act? No, because they're not, they're held by council.
That's kind of your question.
No.
Oh, all right. That's how I took it.
No. Because the developer wouldn't be here, right? And so if he's having a communication and it's a closed, it's now closed, it's not with the public, the developer's considered public, talking about a closed session?
Yeah.
Like if we're in a closed session? And there's communication going on other than the council member, does that follow to that?
I think she's talking about.
Are you, so you're talking that it's in a closed session, and the public's not here, nobody else is here, and gets an email from?
Let's just say developer, I'm just using a hypothetical. And if he shares that information pertaining to what we're talking about, what we're voting on, is that against the rules, or is that okay? Because you're saying no emails are texting during a closed session, that's the way I'm interpreting.
No, I'm saying, don't do any emails or text messages during the meeting.
During a closed meeting?
No, during a meeting.
During a meeting, but this way we're here.
Now.
Okay.
Are you, are you referencing, you're using the word closed. Are you meaning it is not part of the public comment section of a council meeting?
Right, I'm saying it's not.
Okay, well, a closed, the other word, we, we look at that as a closed session, is where we adjourn from a council meeting, go into a closed session.
For just, uh, the public is escorted out.
The public is escorted out.
That's a closed meeting, are you talking about a public hearing?
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm not using the right term.
No, 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 I'm not, that's, that's.
Why, I'm trying to correct you.
Yeah, I'm, no, I'm just trying to.
So I'm not saying closed, I'm saying that the public is no longer open.
Right, the public comment section is not.
Public comment section has now been stopped.
We're not in a hearing. Well, let's, let's say, well, let me, let me change your hypothetical, so it's a little more specific. So, if Scott receives, so if there's a public hearing, and it's like, and the presentation from Katie and Scott, the planning commissioner says, hey, um, you know, this developer has got this on there, they were not able to provide X that's required under, so if we want to move this forward, and we recommend going forward, then I would make a conditional on this, and that's a recommendation. And then Scott says, hey, we just got it just now, from the, let's say it's a traffic study. We just got the traffic study that we were waiting on, and, um, we haven't had a chance to look at it, but it is here. I don't think that's, I don't think that, that doesn't create a problem with, that communication is a great problem. Now, if it's, uh, a different developer that's like, can't believe you guys are doing this, I'm gonna sue you guys, good luck, you know, you'll be hearing from my lawyer.
Or maybe, you know, people are debating a situation that the developer has, and so he chimes in to Scott's email, Scott sees it, wants to present the information, is that okay?
If it's, well, the applicant, you should, if it's an applicant.
Just wait to vote.
Scott doesn't vote.
Yeah, Scott doesn't vote, I know.
I know.
But the information that Scott gets, well, when you decide to vote, and then he shares the information with how you change their vote, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
An applicant is allowed to.
Respond to say. It's an applicant, but maybe it's not the applicant.
It's not public, like, it's not part of the public hearing of the applicant's.
Right, the applicant's speaking, it's not the public's speaking, it's not part of the public hearing. But, I would say, if Rusty's the applicant, he sent that information to Scott in private statement, if Trevor's the developer that's sending information somehow, you know, either for or against Rusty, he's considered a member of the public, and Rusty's the applicant, so Rusty would share.
More context and more specific information, but typically, I would say that's not appropriate to share. Right. If it's not the applicant responding to specific things in the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, that's all I was saying.
Yeah.
Not doing a good job of it, Scott.
I, I like your question, I would, I don't think you said.
Oh, no, I shouldn't have used the word closed, Scott, that's fine.
Sure.
So, for, for member of the public in the, in the audience, are they held to for text messages and emails?
No, so, so, that's a good question. So, I've been in meetings when members of the public send text messages to their elected official. And there's nothing, you can't control that as the elected official, right? Your responding to it is what you should not be doing as an elected official. Yeah. So it's okay for the public to send, they can send you 10,000 during the meeting if they want, but I would just sign on your phone and put it away. Say that. It's not likely. All right, next. Okay, um, we, we're not gonna go too in-depth into this. But go to the next one, this is just the, so, this applies to, this applies to Katie, this applies to all of these elected officials, applies to Suzanne, it applies to Scott as a contractor, it applies to Antini as the treasurer. There are certain ethics requirements of municipal employees and municipal officers. So, go to the next slide. These are standards of conduct, and they are to help avoid or at a minimum disclose potential conflicts of interest between public duties and their personal interests. So, when you came today, each of you were asked to fill out a conflict of interest disclosure form. Recent changes in the law requires that we post those on the website in perpetuity. So if you are an elected appointed official, such as a planning commissioner, you should fill this out, and this goes up on our website, and the law has it last year, states that this must be retained forever on our website. So, you don't get to remove it if you're in the office, you still have to stay there. And, the reason is, they want to make sure that, um, you've disclosed your conflicts of interest, uh, while you're an elected official, and that if anything comes out later, you're gonna be tested. You're gonna be checked in by the department, so, anyway, go to the next slide. Uh, there are certain things that are prohibited, there are six of them. Uh, as a public official, you cannot use your office for a personal benefit. What does that mean? Do you know?
Right.
Can't sell their contracts.
Correct, yeah, yeah. So, so let's say, let's say, uh, that Antini opens up a, um, opens up a bank. And she's a treasurer.
Yeah.
Cool. And she's a treasurer for the city, she can't go and contract with her new man as a treasurer with the city, because that's a personal benefit she owns the bank in. So there's a, there's a really elementary example, but, but the mayor couldn't do that either, right? The mayor couldn't sign a contract with Antini's banker, his bank. Because again, that's creating a personal benefit.
Right, if I'm a rodeo producer, I can't produce Francis's rodeo.
Correct.
I get paid.
Correct. Yeah.
So, if you're the city treasurer.
Or the city recorder, you still can, I'm like.
No, but, so, this is just an example of the city in one of our, in our conferences.
Okay.
So, they were building a new complex. The recorder does all the checks.
Yep.
So she had to fill the checks out, the first bathroom was ever using quickness. She had to fill the checks out, she convinced the mayor to get a stamp signature. So then, she was in charge of all of that. So the checks really weren't going to, they said they were. Not enough for a few years before auditors caught it.
And how did they catch it? Do you remember?
One of the auditors.
If I'm thinking of the company in the same city, um, they caught it because the, the treasurer who's required every year to submit the audit letters and the budgets to the state didn't send them for like three years. And they're like, where are they, where are they, where are they, oh, I'm so far, we're so far behind, we're just a small city, we're so hard. Three years later. She's in jail.
But that's more, it's just.
There's a movie on that too.
Well, it's, it's, that's, that's fraud, right? But it is, but it's still covering the municipal employees' ethics act.
For sure.
So the other thing, you can't take any money, this is completely a complete transaction. So, if you're a, you're real estate agent, you cannot represent somebody buying money, or buying property from the city. So, nor can you take money as an elected official, or as an appointed official, from an individual, um, that would like your help in facilitating a transaction with the city. You can't do business if you are a business regulated, let's see, hang on, let me finish that. You can't do business as a municipal officer with the city, period. Let's see, nor should you be an investor in, let's say, a, a sand gravel pit within the city that's regulated by the city. That's not right. Um, and you can't induce violation of the act, uh, that's also a violation. If you try writing, that's the right move, you talked about earlier, inducing a violation of the act, that's a fraud. That's also a violation. So, anyway. It is a criminal offense, um, and you can be dismissed, removed, uh, the transaction can, can be avoided, while the city can keep the benefit if it is one.
So hold on, you said you couldn't invest in a business that's regulated by the city?
So, if you.
Or just that the city's using.
No, you, so you can't, so, for example, if, you can't.
About the mayor, I can't own a fixture on gravel pit.
Correct.
Well, how can you get on any other business in your city?
Well, so, what kind of regulation is there in the city? Of course, about force string. Other than the business license, that's not regulated by the city. But, sand gravel pit is heavily regulated by the city, and the city.
It's one thing that you're really making a lot of moves for. Or, or people are not making moves.
Well, because it's.
Yeah.
I mean, and, and the larger the dollars, the closer to a violation you're gonna be.
But as long as it stays under the $5,000 limit, because that's what's on the questionnaire, it's not a big deal?
There's still a big deal, but it, it lowers the, it lowers the threshold of the violation of how criminal it is, degrees of criminality.
So, if Rusty lived in Francis City Limits, could he be the mayor who was doing the projects and love?
Nope.
Didn't think.
I was checking.
Ding. Sorry, Rusty.
Just wait, I knew you were hoping to be the mayor.
He's got an application for an extension, it's awesome. All right. Okay, go to the next one. So, you can't use your office for personal benefit. I've, I've seen, I've seen newly elected officials that mean well, right? And they know a guy, and they think they can get a better deal than what the city's done. Right, I've, I've had that. I, I've seen that where you get, an elected official comes in and is like, and this is really expensive. I know a guy that does concrete, he can do, he can do concrete much cheaper than what they've got on this, this subway track. So he tries to undo it. That was trying to secure a personal benefit for a close friend. You can't do that, not only that, and he, his heart was in saving money for the city. What he didn't realize is that there's a contract in place, and it's already been agreed to, and just because you came in here, you're the mayor, doesn't allow you to undo the previous contract. So.
But if there were a contract in place, then there were multiple bids, and they go with the lowest one, that's what's great.
So, so he could go, so he could go through the public procurement process, absolutely. If this friend goes through the same public process as everybody else, submits, say, hey, we've got a, a concrete project coming up, just letting you know about it, if you want to submit a bid, go ahead. Now, if the mayor goes and shares information about the other bids before, then that's, that's a violation of, of procurement. Right, and you can be prosecuted for that, and the other contractors that bid on that would be very upset. And so, um, anyway, those are, the whole point with the, is to be, these are what, these are what, um, what back he's, they call sunshine laws. Open up the door, put the light on, let everybody see it, and if everybody can see it, there's a problem, it'll, somebody will raise the issue. So, you're doing it in the public, it's when the door gets closed, you're doing it in the dark, that's when questions start, guys. So. Okay, next one. Disclosure is typically, that's what, that's not right there, just one before, was just, basically disclosure, you're required to disclose, disclose everything on the, on the, any potential conflict of interest. Disclosure and proper use of private controlled or protected information, that's what we just talked about, if there's a procurement process going on, you did a couple bids in, and there's still two days left. That's why most contractors that are bidding on projects don't, don't send them until the last day. It's not because they're on loan, it's because they're working on it. It's because they don't want that to come out to other bidders, and they're all coming in at the same time. So, anyway, if you, that's a violation, and it also is, uh, it's, uh, but, okay, next one. I just, so, this one, I've seen this one before, um, where a, um, sitting elected official went, um, voted, made a vote to approve a pretty controversial, decided to vote in a controversial development. And, uh, then about six months after this development was approved, moved into, uh, a house in the development. And the, uh, it came out, the developer had paid for, to finish the basement in this house for the, the individual who was in the process. So, that, that would be a violation of this, this, this network. Okay, next one. So, there are limits to what a gift, uh, an elected official can take as a gift in Utah, and it has to be less than $50. And it can't be cash, it can't be a gift card. What it allows you to do, um, is, allows you to accept, for example, when I was an elected official, I served as the board chair for the Wasatch Front West and Recycling District. And then my service was completed, uh, my terms was up as the board chair, they gave me this, um, little crystal keepsake thing, paperweight, that had my name on it, years of service, and the logo of the district. And so, that was less than $50, which I was allowed to accept that, and nobody else would want. So, anyway, if. So, anyway, if, so if somebody were offering you jazz tickets or Utah hockey club tickets or you can't accept, you just can't.
Okay, so what about the city council and the board?
So that would be an award presented for public service. So if, if it was paid for by the city, that's a problem, but if the city council members collectively, that's not the same thing. It's not, it's a gift for their service, right? That's an award presented for public service, you see how it doesn't go that dollar limit there. So I know that we have in Francis, several members of the council got together and gave a retired mayor, a retired mayor, a gift. It's not a violation of law. You can't give, you can't give loans either cheaper than anybody else can. That hasn't happened here. I haven't seen that happen here, but I know that's happened in, in the country where that was specifically written to, to ensure you couldn't do that. And if you have questions about political campaign contributions, those are challenging to do in a one slide thing, so we're not going to get into that. But if you have questions on that and you're a sitting official, let me know. Let's see. So let me give you an example of what happened here. So I know, this is how you properly do this. So the spouse is a developer of an existing sitting official, right? So there was, in this particular city, the spouse had a development that needed about four acres and wanted something divided so he could build houses on it, that's what he did for a living. So the sitting elected official, before that came before, had filled out a little form, I had a conflict of interest on this, she did it, noted it. And then while that was being heard, or before it was being heard, when it came on the agenda, that council member got up, left the room, went outside and took a walk, asked somebody, asked the city manager to text, text her when the vote had been finished. And she came back, she wasn't involved in the vote, wasn't involved in the decorations, didn't talk to any council members or anybody else beforehand, just noted her conflict of interest and left the room. So that's a proper way to handle it.
How could you? Was that? Did you have to do that?
No.
Or they just have to.
They don't have to do that. Sometimes they're even allowed, they're even allowed to make a vote out as long as they disclose it. I would, I would err on the side of walk out when you need to. It just avoids any question. So, and again, public disclosure in the meeting, written with public disclosure in the meeting. I have had, another one, had a planning commissioner who's an architect, was consulting, hired on this particular project to do the work. And they notified, notified in the meeting, hey, I'm an architect, I'm this, so I'll be voting. And we had to, because he didn't make me aware of that beforehand, so, before the meeting, so we had to continue that for the next meeting because he had written conflict of interest disclosure about that, not just.
And is that a form that you have to, yeah, just kind of write it down or?
The state, the state has a form, there's certain requirements for it. You don't have to use the state form, but you have to meet all the requirements of the, of the.
Okay, I just remembered why you had to, you know, stop.
Because we have to go there, in order to, in order to protect the planning commissioner and to protect the, just the proceedings in general.
Okay.
You just make sure you do that public disclosure, you follow the code and you don't, you don't take chances with that. Right? You don't take chances with it, chances of you getting in trouble with it later drastically diminished.
So you would want that, or not like, like a form in the file somewhere?
Right, right. We'd want it notified and shared with the other, like it should be. Nobody should go into that meeting not knowing. The planning commissioner or no, no council member should go into that meeting not knowing that there's a conflict of interest with so and so. Let's see, you can't, you can't, you can't take, you can't take money. So no. Next one. Yep, you can't, you can't take money after the fact either, assisting tragedy of the city unless, what's the unless? It's all kind of. Let's see. Okay, so there are processes that, and typically these apply in situations where there's no other possible provider for the service or the product. So here the only, if the city needs widgets and there are no widgets in the entire world and Katie's husband is the only one that makes widgets, city can go get the widgets from her, but everybody has to know beforehand, but that is the only ones that make widgets and everybody agrees that nobody else makes any widgets. And they go and, so, anyway. How many more slides? I think we're close to that.
About 24 or 35.
Okay, building this one. Okay, this is kind of disclosure. If we get into this, we won't have to go through this, but we'll go through it. We'll make sure you go through it so we're protected. Keep going. Okay, so there's 10 data, keep going. You have to know about the interest for this. Okay, go to the next one. So here's where you have the value. Okay, go next. There are some limits in those. Let's see, just business disclosure. Okay, it's ended in the minutes, you have to have that. So there are, there are some exceptions, but they're, they're rare in a few parts. If you have any conflict of interest, you have to visit the city. Let's go through it and let's talk about it before you do it. Okay, next. Okay, go next. Again, you have that disclosure, like I told you about my council member that had the husband that was buying developing property in the city. Here's someone, okay. Okay, passing this to me here. Next. This is where the, depends on the criminal penalty, it's based on value of the, value of conflict. So this is, this is a protection for, for all of you. You can't be charged with a crime accidentally violating it. Right, you have to knowingly or intentionally violate the crime. Everybody knows what a crime is, right? So that was hard to say, but you, but if you accidentally, not knowingly violated, violated a statute, oh, I didn't realize I couldn't take a campaign contribution for my upcoming raise from so and so because they reported the council a year and a half ago and I forgot about that. Right? So there are defenses to it, there's. You need to know knowingly and intentionally, but that's the standard because why, it's a crime. It's a crime. So the criminal standard is beyond reasonable value. Next. Any other questions?
I have one more. Are we allowed to exclude certain people from public comment?
If they are a resident in the city, well, I can't even pay the time on you. I need more context.
So I can think of a situation that's not a public, it's come up recently, just that's why it popped in my mind. So for a public hearing that's noticed with like a two weeks notice, I would say no, especially if they're a resident, right? There have been some applications recently for concept plans for commercial developments. A public hearing is not required, but we have opened up some time for people in the planning commission to, that are neighbors of the project, to talk about their concerns, but it's not a public hearing. Let's hear some of the concerns from the neighbors because our code says that you should consult the neighbors on their concerns. So in that situation of the concept, like we have just limited it to certain people.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that.
Is that what you're talking about?
Kim, were you saying to limit it or to exclude them completely?
So the only time we think that you can exclude a comment is if they, or stop a comment is if they exceeded the time limit of the chair, the planning commission or the council said, the mayor says you have three minutes and they're going on seven or eight minutes.
But they haven't been excluded because they've been able to speak.
Right.
I'm talking about, the room's full of people and can we exclude people that we don't want to hear from? Can we do that? Or do we give everybody a chance?
Well, so there's a coinciding of, collision of rights there, right? There is, when you're, when you're an elected official or appointed official before a public body, which would include the planning commission and council. And it's appropriate, but if, if it's, if it's somebody coming up to, and you already know they're coming up to, they've got an axe to grab against government in general and it's the planning commission, you're in the wrong, you're in the wrong forum, dude. Right, there's no, so it's like, okay, I get, you might have an issue here, but this is not the right place to address this issue. So, so that particular one, yeah, you can exclude that. But if it's, if it's something, let's say, well, let's say it's a developer that is angry that this project is going forward and doesn't like it, it's not his project, but he's mad about it and wants to just rail on the process or something like that. If it's substantive and it's like, hey, this is what the issues are and this is what I'm concerned about, that's one thing, but if it's just, you guys are just favoring somebody over somebody else, that's.
Okay, but now you're talking about subject, right? Like you're now talking about like the meat and potato. I'm talking about just in general, can we allow people that show to come up and voice their concern?
Or if it's, if it's relevant to the, I don't even know where this is going. If it's relevant.
They have to. So first of all, they have to recognize their first event, right?
Yeah, a public hearing, you're, you can't, you can't exclude anybody on a public hearing, but it needs, but you can, like for example, if somebody's already talked about, well, I'm concerned about the noise, I'm concerned about, you've got seven people that are talking about the noise and the 19th person is, I'm really concerned about the noise, you have to be prepared. You don't, you don't, you don't need any more discussion about the noise, we know about the noise.
But if the public comment is open, the public hearing is still open and.
But it needs to be, and I would just tell in the beginning, public comment is open related to this project. So if it cuts up and it's not related to the project, there's no reason to do that.
Right, but if Justin gets up and makes a comment, but then Rusty wants to give, I'm like, no, 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 not Rusty. And Kenny can talk, but not Rusty.
Yeah, you can't, you can't, you can't, you can't just discriminate based on.
Can I only, between two things? So first, you just said that neighboring or adjacent people per code are allowed to speak or give their opinion on a relevant topic outside of public comment, correct?
On certain applications.
On certain applications, like concept. Where we're. You're in gray area either way.
Right.
It should really be cleaned up that says, it's not a public hearing, it's not a public hearing, but the planning commission may hear, I mean, you could put some language on that that would give you some a little more authority, but it's, but just to say, the planning commission is encouraged to give, get feedback from neighboring residents. It's a little, that's a little fuzzy.
So in that scenario, assuming we clean up the code, individuals, it's not like we're fact checking here.
Right.
Individuals.
Yeah, I would be the advocate on that. You got enforcement issue.
Because that's the case.
Yeah.
Done. That scenario, get it. Public comment, open up the public comment on the same thing on the next session.
You could have somebody that lives in.
Everybody gets two minutes.
Yep. And I can, you can limit that, you can hold it to two minutes. If you can't, can't get your piece in in two minutes, give the rest of your paper to somebody, let's say that's.
No, sorry, two entirely different scenarios, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
But the key is to look at the agenda and like this agenda that's up here, you'll see that tonight, there's no public hearings.
Right.
There was a public comment period or anything and this guy's got up and talked about the reasons across America. We could have somebody get up and talk about whatever, it's not on the agenda.
Yeah.
And then we didn't have any public hearings. And so the rest of these items, like when we get to the alcohol permit, local consent, we really don't have to, we don't have any obligation to have, let's let the public speak.
Correct.
But you'd be fine with saying, well, but we'll listen to Auntie, but not Kim.
On what?
On, like alcohol permit. Because it's not public comment, but if we're allowed to say, well, no, we've done that before, although.
Well, is it? So, so yeah, so it's not, so if you were to say, like if somebody says, hey, I've got a question from the public and the council or the mayor decides, okay, well, okay, well, here it is. That's your guys', you can do that if you want, like from a purely legal advice standpoint, probably recommend against that.
So we're bad, like.
Just because, because then if you have seven other people that raise their hand and you don't choose them, why did you choose them? It's because you discriminated against me. Why? Well, because you agree here. You know, whatever, right? You're from Mars, so, yeah.
Yeah, every, every now and then that will happen, like, like tonight, you know, there'd be, outside of the planning commission, there's two members of the public.
Right.
Then my, you know, and if I ever, like, I would generally, I'd be, sure. Got something to say, say, in a room full, I would never do that.
Yeah.
Just because of that, because you just, now you go, you're pretty much two, three out of one.
Yeah.
And all of them.
If you do, you gotta treat everybody better, right? That's the 14th amendment, Constitution, everybody, equal treatment of all. That can equal. Anything else? Considering yourself.
No, no, I was just, I thought it was up to you.
Oh, no.
Oh, I was just looking.
Oh.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, alcohol permit, local consent. Katie's got a staff report, it's in your packet. The applicant is here. Katie.
All right, switch over to this one. So the site that we're talking about is for the town center, the town center development. The restaurant is in the location that I've marked on blue. Site plan here is the southeast corner of Spring Hall Road and State Building side. We've talked about this development in the past, so I won't go into a ton of detail, but it's three parcels here on the corner and it's 3.49 acres, it's adjacent to the same property. We did approve site plans, our protection plans and landscape plans back in 2022 for the town center development. The applicant is revising those and requesting some different uses there. One of the different uses that's being requested is a restaurant that serves alcohol and this will be on parcel FT92 as shown on the map. The property's on city center. Restaurants aren't allowed to use in the city center zone, however, the Francis City Code and state law requires that establishments selling alcohol get written consent from the city council before applying to the top apartment of alcohol or beverage control or a license to sell alcohol beverages. If the city council votes to grant local consent to the application, will then be considered by the planning commission and city council as a commission use. I put some information into the staff report about the state code. The state themselves will actually verify this information, but part of it is the distance to a community location, which Brad and I have discussed this, and the city property here would be considered a community location. So it has to be within 300, cannot be within 300 feet of the proposed restaurant as measured from the nearest patron entrance of the proposed restaurant by following the shortest route of ordinary pedestrian travel to the property down rate of the location. Or, not and, but or, can't be within 200 feet of the proposed restaurant measured in a straight line. So I'm gonna scroll down here and show you a site plan, the distances on that. Again, the state will be the one that determines these distances, but I think some people might have questions about it, so we'll put this up here. So the applicant has provided this showing that there's an entrance here. This would be the walking path and it would be 200, 348 feet using that walking path. The proposed hotel lobby is here, so they have to go past that, the restaurant was a little bit farther north. So they route to 348 feet. So that would, the state agrees and they would have heard that. Let's see. So I think I referenced about the city process on it. This is a legislative decision. It's up to the discretion of the city council, you may grant or deny it in your sole and absolute discretion. So a way to throw some cons of granting local consent and make a decision that you go as best in the interest of the city. And a public hearing is not required for this item. We will have local public hearings. If we grant local consent, then we would have a public hearing for the commission use process for both the planning commission and the city. That's it for me. There's also a letter from the applicant's attorney. But I think that there's nothing really new, other information that I'll bring up for that, if you're interested, you can read it. Okay.
Correct. Any questions or comments from the council before we?
Any questions or comments from the council before we pass that? Any others that think that?
Do you have anything to add?
I do.
What makes city property a community location is the playgrounds?
Yeah, I was actually...
It's not a, it's not a distance to the playground, it's a distance to the property. And because that, the city property is not subdivided, the actual distance to the playground is significantly more than the three forty-eight, but, so, anyway.
Yeah, to the property line, not to the playground.
It's quite a bit farther too, yeah. Oh, that's, it's a lot.
Yeah, probably double.
Or close to that.
Yeah.
Oh, well, it says a public playground or a tour park, is in the definition of the state code.
Right.
That would be a new location. Okay, any questions, comments from the council?
Well, my only concern was the distance, what would be the property, you explain that to we are.
Well, the question, the only question I had was that, just we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is, is, this is assuming, and maybe that's the way it is, it's assuming people are not crossing the parking lot, we're crossing the street. Like, that's just like sidewalk.
It says the normal, so it has two ways of complying. You can do it with the, the distance that a normal pedestrian would take from they to get to the, to get to, to the property line, or a straight two hundred foot. So it has to be, the way a pedestrian would go at three hundred feet, or straight shot of two hundred feet, or as it proplies kind of thing.
Which we got, well, and a straight shot looks like two hundred forty-five or eighteen hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we...
And if we approve it, and the state comes out and measures it, and they disagree, they can deny it.
Yes.
That's what you have to do.
Yeah, they can, they want, right.
To decide on that. We don't have to decide on the distance, that's related to their discretion.
Right, so if we believe that, we can prove it, then they could, they could deny it, well, they will deny it if it's not...
It's not being with the code, right?
Yeah. Okay, anything else? So I know, a few years ago, we had this same issue come up with the Frontier Cafe. That was granted then, sure, it's a probably a little bit different distance, but relatively the same, just as a G is. Okay, so if there's no other questions, concerns, or discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve, how do I do this?
Grant.
The applicant, or grant the alcohol permit.
No, grant the local consent.
Local, okay, grant the local, that's right. Grant the local consent to be able to serve alcohol in the restaurant.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
I pass this.
All right? Just like that.
So we'll have to have some kind of written document, right?
Yeah, we can just have a letter prepared and have names on it.
Yeah, we'll get that taken care of. All right. Next thing is you're, on the agenda is the conflict of interest forms. You have received those, please complete them. So I'm, I'm personally gonna try to get an electronic copy and type it out, so that it's actually legible, specified item, it's as good as not disclosing it. Because no one, no one will know what it says. Maybe that's the secret.
I sound like a lawyer, probably.
True. True, but, so we'll need those relatively quickly, but not necessarily...
Required by the end of the month, right? We have to have them posted by the end.
By the end of the month, okay.
And you're gonna post this exact thing, my handwriting?
Yes, unless you wanna do it, if you wanna do it...
That's why I want an electronic copy.
That's what I heard, and then it'll be...
You didn't read right. My scribbles, is that gonna be okay? All right.
Post it as you want, or do you wanna do that?
I don't agree with you.
We can do that too, whatever you wanna do.
Okay, we'll get to the, to the next item. Any council reports? Okay, any...
Well, did I tell, did I tell you guys last month? I don't know if I did or not. So the Queen Contest is set for May thirty-first.
Oh, good.
And I've got the Canvas stuff all reserved, so we'll just use everything at Canvas, so... And May, May thirty-first. On top of stuff this year.
Good work.
Also, I got an elevator from Trevor in Atlantic City. Do you guys want to try to do something different this year, so your hometown people can try to get tickets before or not?
Yeah, I would like to do something. I'd like to stick with the electronic ticketing, personally, but then maybe have it open, I don't know, maybe we'll reserve a certain number, I don't know, we gotta figure something out, but. I wanna do the same thing, but different. You know what I'm saying? Exactly the same, but different. Yeah. All right. Anything else? Council-wise? Okay, planner?
We got a few things, real quick.
Okay, engineer, I mean.
Real quick. There's an open house for the S R eighty-two corridor study on Monday night, the thirteenth. It's from five to seven, encourage any, all of you to come, and invite your friends and family. There's a community planning lab that's starting up soon, that's, it's a, I don't know how to describe it, it's a series of trainings and informational sessions to learn about how planning works in your communities. If anyone's interested, please let me know. It is hosted by Summit County, and I've heard really good things about it, so people have found it really interesting. Let me know if they're interested. Community Planning Lab. Yeah, what's the date? It's a, it's a whole session, it's, for lots of different days. Okay.
But it begins when?
I don't know when it begins, it's starting up again soon.
Oh, I see.
Oh, we're taking, you have to apply for it to begin, to take this community planning lab, to be a part of it, you have to apply. So encourage you, talk to me if you're interested in applying.
Studies, I think, but certainly a few studies.
But the open house is...
Okay, that's cool.
Yeah, the corridor study, open house is...
That's cool.
Monday, at five.
Yeah.
Yeah, Monday, where it's live to seven, at the Canvas City... Oh, Summit County. Summit County Library and Canvas. Okay, yeah. But it's open house, so come anytime between five and seven. Last, just so that you're aware, the town center development is on the agenda for next week's planning commission meeting. There's five public hearings that are associated with it, and as well as a commercial development and another separate commercials development. That could be likely to be on the agenda next meeting, February, we'll see how that goes, but could be, could be coming up, so that's it for me.
All right. Scott?
All right, so, as you can see from the English register, we're working on the fuel station. We're hoping to set that one the end of this month, first of February. They're up there, we made, had to make a connection today to the big line that they put in. They put in a new pressure line, the fuel station to, to three D five, but sewer, the gravity sewer they're installed for the subdivision was in conflict with the location, so we had to add a deal line and put it in the new line. So that's happening. Other than that, let's hope.
Okay, you, you tell me, when are they gonna cross for you?
Monday.
Or?
Yeah, they're hoping to do it today, but they have to back my attention, so they can, can, continue going.
Or you better...
I do. It affects me.
He looks bright for it.
All right. Anything else? Okay. Just by way of information from the mayor, we have, if you remember, there was a, another office assistant job approved in the budget. That job has been posted, advertised, we've received fourteen applications, which I don't think we've ever received fourteen applications for anything ever, in Francis, ever. So we'll start in, we're gonna start setting appointments for interviews next week, and then we'll hold interviews for all the applicants and go through that system, so you'll be seeing that coming up. This is likely the last meeting in this building, we'll be moving to our new building, hopefully by next meeting, so. I think you're good. That's all, guys. All right? Anybody else for anybody?
I wanna stay here.
All right. Thank you for the most important motion of the night.
I have a question for you. Just because I was reading through your lightning, did I have to have a motion that depended on the council meeting or the chairman's adjournment?
Technically, they need a motion as seconds. And have a...
And a vote. Okay.
Go.
I'll make a motion to return.
Second. Sam's seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there anybody who really wants to stay here?
Coincident.
Perfect, thank you.